Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order our community commissioner of the Hamilton County Commission. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Bridget Dory. I'm the community manager.
Lisa Darien, deputy clerk.
Alicia Reed, Hamilton County Commissioner, vice president of the board.
Good afternoon. I'm county commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aluto, county administrator.
Michael Friedman.
Thank you all so much. And I'm Stephanie Sumerodumas, president of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We have lots of things on our agenda today. Welcome, everyone. We have a almost full house, which is a good thing. The first, I would, first of all, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if I could just start with a motion from the floor. We have a resolution that I would like to read that both my colleagues have agreed upon as it relates to the Juneteenth holiday. And I would like to read the resolution and make a motion from the floor. Whereas on September the 24th, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, adopted a resolution declaring Juneteenth an official paid holiday in Hamilton County, Ohio. And whereas the resolution will authorize the Hamilton County Commissioners to raise the Juneteenth flag on Thursday, June the 16th, Tuesday, June the 21st and 22nd. And whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners are asking that this date be a time to commemorate the ending of slavery in the United States, and now therefore be it resolved by the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners that the Juneteenth flag will be raised June the 16th at Hamilton County Courthouse and remain raised until Tuesday, June the 21st, 2022. So from the chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Sumerodumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
Madam President, can I just say one quick thing about this? Just wanted to commend your leadership on this issue. I know before I was a member, but I want to say that we were leading in getting this flag up and also having it to be a holiday under your leadership. And I just wanted to say, now it is a national holiday. I also saw the city of Cincinnati, I think it's considering to making it a holiday for their workers as well. There's lots of activities that are happening around the city and around the county. But I did want to highlight that because before it was popular, you did bring something forward and Hamilton County, made Hamilton County a leader as it related to Juneteenth. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay. Ladies, let's get to work. Our first item on the agenda is Imagination Library presentation. If you could, we have two representatives that can come forward. And you're going to talk about our babies. And I thank you so much for involving me initially on this program in that I can remember getting, getting emails from you guys. So we got 20,000 books out. We got 30,000 books out. And then, of course, you're going to talk about where we are now. So welcome.
Exactly. Well, thank you so much for having us. I'm Greg Schumlos. I'm at Cincinnati Children's Hospital. I'm a pediatrician, the medical director of our literacy programs. And this is Tiana Henry, our literacy coordinator here with me. And Children's Hospital coordinates the Hamilton County branch of the Ohio Imagination Library. We were last here in February of 2020, so it's been a couple of years. And since that time, we just wanted to give you some updates and some, some new information. So just very briefly, why do we care about books and kids? Well, we know that these first two years of life are an incredible period of development. These little slices depict the number of neurons in the brain. And actually, at age two, you have the most neurons of your life. And after that, it's all pathway reinforcement and pruning. And a lot of studies have shown that simply sharing books and reading books with young people are one of the most effective ways that parents can help their children get ready for school. So simply put, books make better brains. So that's why Children's Hospital is so excited about the Imagination Library program. Now, a lot of people have heard about the Imagination Library since it was started by Dolly Parton, and there's a lot of publicity. And so the Imagination Library works the same no matter where you are. And basically, it fosters reading at home by sending books directly to the home. Every child is eligible free of, free of charge from birth until age five. So you can roll from birth till five. If you're there the whole time, you get 60 books. Every child gets the same first book, The Little Engine That Could, when they graduate on their fifth birthday. Look out kindergarten, here I come. And the important thing is in between is that the library does a really good job about picking really important and good books. And actually, every month, there isn't just one book that goes out. There's five different books that go out to the community for children of different ages. Now, we started the Imagination Library in Cincinnati back in 2015 as a pilot. And when we were here last time in February of 2020, it was right before Fran Dwyane launched the statewide Imagination Library. So now the Imagination Library is available to every child, not only in Hamilton County, but every child in Ohio. So we just wanted to touch base and say a little bit about our access with our enrollment, our research, and some of our penetration into the community. First of all, with enrollment, when we first were here last time, we had about 11,000 children enrolled. And today, we have over 26,000, almost 27,000 enrolled in the county. That's an increase of about 126%, which we're proud of. But right now, we're at about 49, almost 50% of the children in the county. So population estimates tell us there's about 54,000 children less than five in the county. We've been able to send a lot of books to the home. Just last month, we had our 1,000,000th book celebration. So since our start in 2015, 1 million books have been sent out to the community. Fran Dwyane and Commissioner actually came to our celebration to celebrate our big milestone. Now, the Imagination Library is free for anyone, and it is meant for everyone, but we also work really hard to make sure we reach the children that need it most. This is our most recent heat map of our enrollees, superimposed on Hamilton County. And so we're really happy to see a good distribution in all of the neighborhoods, the children living in poverty in the red zones, along with all the suburbs. Now, like everybody, we don't want to just do a feel-good program. We want to make sure that we're being effective. And part of our pilot was an evaluation study. And since we saw you last, we've been able to have our data peer reviewed and actually publish it in the Journal of Pediatrics, which is one of the leading pediatric journals. What we did is we looked at the kindergarten readiness tests of the children entering kindergarten in the Cincinnati Public School District. Now, the first set of bars you see is our first year of the program. The Cincinnati Public School at Large is in blue, and the Imagination Library children are in green. And you can see, unfortunately, there was a 14, over 14% deficit in them performance on the kindergarten readiness test at our beginning year. As we followed these children over the three years, they significantly closed that gap, which with, by about 11%, with only a 3% gap at the end of those three years. Now, our intention was to continue to follow this because there's obviously kind of a little dose response, but unfortunately, COVID got in the way of our plans, and the schools stopped doing the kindergarten readiness test for a couple of years. But we will revisit this in the next coming years to make sure that our programs are effective. Now, in addition to the numbers on the kindergarten readiness test, we hear from a lot of families that there's a lot of other changes that are just as important than these numbers in the homes. All of our parents report on their surveys that they're reading a lot more at home and also a lot more engaged with books. It's a known fact that simply enjoying books helps you do better at school. And Tiana, our coordinator champion, hears a lot from our families.
So who reads these books to children? There's mothers, there's fathers, there's grandmas, aunties, everyone. It takes a community to read to the children. This program is highly valued by families. Families have written not only thank you letters to us, they have told us that this program has helped them survive, especially during their past. This has been very important to the community, especially in Hamilton County. Some verbatims from parents may read, "When the books come in the mail, my child is very excited, and we spend a lot of time reading and rereading the new books. We read before bed every night, and it ensures that we get to spend quality time together, and he looks forward to that time. It makes our bond stronger. My child loves the books. We spend a lot more time together. They love reading the books, and we get them in the mail." It doesn't only help one child, it helps all my children. And so we've been seeing a great trend of the older children reading to the younger children, which is great. We want to continue to have that outcome, and not only, again, we are looking to have a community of readers. Everyone can read to our children. So somehow, people are always wondering, how do we get the word out? We've done everything that we can do, everything from a PSA on a radio station to all of these wonderful partners that we have listed here. People are enrolling at the library. When you go to the library at the kiosk, you can go ahead and, and register online there. We have some QR codes in different pop-up produce shops and different places across the community. We also are working with Head Start, Foresee for Children, Every Child Succeeds. More and more organizations are getting on board of this reading train, and we are so excited. Partnerships with enrollment. As you know, the public library has been a huge partnership. That's where we had our 1,000,000th book celebration. And we thank Stephanie, President Stephanie Sumerodumas, for coming down and giving us a resolution for that as well. But we've been enrolling children everywhere that we can, public school districts, working with the street teams, birthing hospitals, everywhere. And we are trying to add more places to that list. Community outreach and involvement. We've been in the community. We've been in the clinics. We've had some really cool events. We've had some people dress up, as you can see, with Dr. Seuss apparel. You've had some fun times reading some really cultural competency books. And we've also had children, as young as two, get on board and think that they're reading, but they are reading because they're remembering. So we are just so elated to have these things happen. QR codes. It's just not, you don't have to be that techie savvy. Just act like you're taking a picture and go online. We've seen a success, especially with our younger parents enrolling with the QR code. We are hoping to have one at every big event this summer, so look out for them. We just want to thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for your support of our program. We hope to grow, and we want to get every child in Hamilton County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I'll open it up for any questions or comments. I have one question, and I probably shouldn't ask, but I'm going to ask. I see Hamilton County Commissioners have been supportive. How much money have we given? I heard you say there's about 54,000 children that need to be reached. And I don't remember us allocating any monies, and I may be wrong. I know we've been given our moral support and commitment. So how much money has Hamilton County given?
Yes, you guys have been wonderful with your moral support. We have not received any financial support yet. During these first couple of years of the program, there was a lot of interest and a huge amount of funding that came forth, which is tailing off. So as we work on our budget for this coming year, we would definitely be open to more financial partners.
Okay. Thank you so much. Vice President Reed.
I just want to say thank you for your work. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your program. And certainly during, I know, the COVID times, because I know that was a big thing. And thank you for helping children and families get through those tough times when you couldn't come outside and you couldn't do things you certainly read in a book could be very helpful to them, and I'm sure very helpful to their mental health as well. So thank you, and always I love to see these great partnerships and initiatives with our great Children's Hospital. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you. I too want to thank you for your work and the partnership with children's. Anybody that partners with children's, often you see success. And I think, you know, you say 50% of the kids are participating. I think that's a huge number, because I think it's really hard to reach out to these younger families who are very distracted with just, you know, getting their, their daily lives together. So I think 50% is a really successful number. I know you're reaching for more, and I hope that we can help you do that and achieve higher. But I applaud that kind of participation through Hamilton County. And I just want to say anecdotally, when I was a young parent many, many years ago, I read to my kids all the time. And I do attribute some of their success in academics to that reading that, that started when they were young, but then continued throughout, you know, their careers in, in school. So I, I've never seen that graph where you had the neurons and the, the brain development. We're always told about this, but to see that on the screen was really impactful. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you for those kind words. And I shouldn't, maybe it seemed like I downplayed that 50%, and I shouldn't, because you're right, it's a huge celebration and a success. We're actually one of the highest enrolled counties in the state, which is really hard in an urban area, because like you said, people are distracted, it's hard to get them enrolled. And yeah, places where they've been doing this a very long time, they're lucky to get up to 70%. So we're already up to 50% after, after two years. So, but yes, we can always use your help in spreading the word. So anywhere you are, talk about the Imagination Library. Thanks.
Thank you guys so much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, funding recommendations for 2021
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I am a poor substitute for Steve Johns today. I'm filling in for Steve if he can't make it. So my job is fairly simple here. I'm here to introduce Maria Collins. Maria has joined us from, with a lot of experience in community and economic development, and I'm happy to announce her at this first meeting here that she'll be in front of you from. She was introduced a few weeks ago by Jeff. From that point, she has hit the ground running. As you know, our Community Development Department, former administrator Joy Pearson, ran the division for several years and left it in good standing. However, we've had to onboard several new employees, and Maria is leading them into a new phase. So from this standpoint, she is doing a great job for us. And today, she is going to bring forth the recommendations for the 2021. Correct? 2021, make sure we get the right year, all right? Home recommendations. These would traditionally be in front of you at the latter portion of the year. We had to delay a few things because of, we needed an administrator for our community development program. So you'll actually see a second 2022 Home Recommendations come forward to you later this year. So without any further ado, I'd like to pass over to Maria Collins. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You did well.
I spoke into the microphone right this time, right?
Welcome, welcome.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So yes, this is my first of many presentations before you. Hopefully, they'll all go well. This first presentation that I'm coming today with is on our 2021 Home Recommendations. As James had stated, make sure I get this right. So I want to start out with an overview of our home budget allocations for '21. We received 1.5 million in home funds from HUD. We have $50,000 of that, which is set aside for CHODOs. And we have 150,000 of that that is set aside or allocated for administration fees and the housing action planning. We also have 107,000 set aside for internet, interfaith health networks and model group. And this is for a ongoing housing project, multi-housing project. So total available award for 2021 home funds was $1.19 million. Just an overview about the program itself. The home program was executed or implemented in the county in 2016. We have funded affordable housing developments through a competitive RFP process. The minimum request for home funds is $50,000. The maximum award is $500,000. Projects must serve low-to-moderate-income families within participating jurisdictions throughout Hamilton County. The home review process for 2021, the RFP for this year's funds were released in February '22. We, there was a Q and A session held for applicants on February 16th of '22, and applications were due on March 4th of '22. We received a total request of $1.225 million for three housing development projects throughout Hamilton County. The staff review, or the home review process, was carried out with a staff review of the proposals to determine completion and eligibility of the projects. And also, we had underwriting performed through the National Development Council. And then the Community Development Advisory Committee, CDAC, also reviewed and scored the applications. This year's 2021, or the 2021 Home Funding Recommendations are as follows. Habitat for Humanity, the project is Habitat Lachlan, West College Hill. The local jurisdictions are Springfield Township and Lachlan. The 2021 recommended award is $350,000. The total budget for the project is $780,000. The project will result in six new single-family homes for homeownership. The type of project is new construction of single-family housing. The second applicant, Homesteading and Urban Redevelopment, also known as HERC, the project is HERC Lincoln Heights. The jurisdiction for the project is Lincoln Heights. The 2020 recommended award is $300,000. The total project cost is 1.1 million. They will develop four new single-family homes in Lincoln Heights for homeownership. And then the final applicant was Urban Sites. The program is called Padretti Place. The local jurisdiction for this project is Dale High Township. The 2021 recommended award is $500,000. The total project budget is $11.9 million, which will result in 48 new rental multifamily housings for seniors. So the total 21 recommended award is $1,150,000. The total budget, overall budget, is $13,832,416, for a total of 58 new units. The 2021 project leverage for all three of these projects, starting with Habitat for Humanity, as you can see, a dollar and 23 cents of every home fund will leverage a dollar of every, of each of the funds that will be put in through equity. On the HERC project, $2.67 of home funds that have been leveraged will match every dollar of equity being put into the project by HERC. And then for Urban Sites, $22.90 leveraged home funds will be put in or match every dollar of equity being put in for the project. The overall leverage on the total county funds in the project is $11.03. And these are just some images of some previous projects that have been completed using home So this is just an overview or summary of the affordable housing investments made by the county from 2016 to 2021. And as you can see overall, over those past, from 2016 to '21, total county funds that have been leveraged for affordable housing development in Hamilton County is $7,429,178, for a total of 884 new affordable units that have been developed throughout the county. The total project cost, overall project cost over those years, is $157,117,994. The total leveraged home funds is $20.15 for every dollar of equity invested in the projects. So that is all that I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's awesome. We, we're looking at 58 new units.
Yes.
That's great. This program is really something that is needed as it relates to affordable housing. I noticed that there was a little bit of money left over. We didn't spend it all. Did we just think to, to hold on to that for incidentals? I think it was like 40,000 maybe that wasn't spent.
Yes, yes. Actually, we roll it over into the next year of home funding, so it's just provides an additional cushion to any contingencies. And then also looking at inflation and things of that nature that have now kind of reared up. It's kind of good to have that little additional money if those projects should need it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions. It was very clear.
Thank you.
Thanks. Vice President Reed.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I do need a point of clarity on, so 2021 project leverage. We were at a project out in Lincoln Heights. So are these projects coming up, or are they, these are projects that already have been done?
No, these, actually, this is another phase of the HERC development project in Lincoln Heights, Yale. So these have not started yet. We're right now just presenting these to you. Then we'll get permission to move forward with the awards.
Gotcha.
Here shortly.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The other thing, I just wanted to make sure, although we have different pots of money and we do things in different silos because of restrictions, federal dollars, non-federal dollars, but to the average person that's just a Hamilton County resident or taxpayer, you know, we hear the word affordable housing. And so one of the things I just think going, as we go forward, and I think we're working on it, I just want to make sure it's on the table, is that we know we're putting additional dollars into affordable housing out into affordable housing outside of these federal dollars that we have. And I just think getting a map or one map, one, I've been asked more interactive type of map to show really the impact that this board has made as it relates to affordable housing. Because you, you go out and, you know, you go out and you'll hear like, you know, we don't have anything with affordable housing, you're not doing anything, or you are doing something. So it just helps us to be able to know, we have 884 units here, but what does it mean with the money that, you know, they don't care what pot it comes from? So that we could say, okay, affordable housing underneath this umbrella, here's what the county is doing, has done for the last couple of years, and you could kind of follow it. And then total units, your units, units that we're going to impact here, so that when we are out talking about this conversation of affordable housing, we're able to take everything that we've done. Because I really believe that our county, we have been a leader in affordable housing. I mean, a lot of people are talking about it.
Right.
But, I mean, we put, you know, buddy where the mouth here, we're talking 40 million, plus all the money that we're doing through the, our federal home funds.
Right.
And if we put it together and we look at the units together, and of course, there's always more work to do, but I think that it puts us in a place that, you know, talks about, you know, we're, we're out front in this. We're moving forward in this. We are having completion of things on this. And, you know, we hear a lot of different entities, hell, we want to advise you to do this, advise you to do that. We've taken in their advice, but more importantly, we put money where our mouths are. So I just wanted to see something where there's a, a map. You could go to our website and you could hit this map and see all that we've done and where we've done. You know, we're in Dale High, we're, we're in Lincoln Heights, we're, we're all over Hamilton County. And they can kind of see the dots of where we are. They can see how many units that we've impacted, whether it's through our federal funds that we manage, or whether it's through ARPA funds that we manage, or general fund dollars that we manage. We kind of, we can really look at, here's where we are. And then we can also measure our own growth.
Exactly.
You know, we've done this, but we did more, look, look at how we're moving the needle more in these areas. And then break it down to, like you said, seniors. We've got, here's the senior component. People with disabilities, we have something for them. People with reentry, we have something for them. Everyday working people who can't make it and afford it, we have something for them. And then we can also, it helps us as a board, get a measurement ourselves to see where we're improving, maybe where improvements are necessary. So we're doing, I just want to say, doing great work. I just think we need to have someplace that we could find it, we can get it, we can simplify it, and that the public can go to and see exactly what we're doing. So, great job, I just want to put that back on the table. I know I've mentioned it before, but I wanted to put it back on the table with our administrator, and I know he's working on something like this.
Yeah, Madam President.
And I was going to say, you have mentioned it before, that we needed something like this, yeah.
And Madam President, Madam Vice President, so actually, yesterday I had submitted to the board, and probably, I think it was late in the day, you probably haven't had any chance to look at it yet, but a synopsis of the first quarter work plan that the administration's been working on. This was one of those items. So in that document, there will be a link to an interactive map that has everything from affordable housing projects to enterprise zones, CRAs, site readiness work, community revitalization grants. So you got a map of the county with, where, you know, you can scroll over and it'll highlight, you know, how much this grant was for and for what project, that type of thing. So I'll forward that out, because it's buried in a document, it's about 10 pages long right now. I'll forward it out to you as a separate link today after this meeting, so you'll have it and you can start to look at it. We just wanted to get your input before we really start putting it out there to the public.
Thank, Madam President, I just want to say, thank you, I think that's great. And also make sure we have some simplified numbers, that if somebody just goes on there, how many affordable units has the county done? We're able, we're even able, because I couldn't tell them, I got 884 here, I'm doing something over there. But we're doing some great work. The administration, I just want to say, some great work is being done. And if we could have, even as you go to the map, there's a synopsis, a person could go to and say, boom, we've got, I don't know, 10,000, 100,000 units we've done over this many years.
Yeah, and we'll continue to build this out over time, even looking at, you know, we want to get more projects because the county, like you said, is doing so much. So we'll try to figure out how to, how to build road projects into this and all of that type of stuff, and simplify it for people as well. And I do want to thank Maria and all the folks who chipped into this effort, and Mark Von Allman, who was the, the point person on, on getting the map pulled together. So, but more to come as we dialogue on your input on that map.
Awesome, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you, thank you, and welcome to the county. I have a couple of questions. So the first one is, as I look at the history, and I know you're new, so you may not know the answer to this. So I apologize for that in advance.
That's okay, I might.
But as we look at the 16 through 21 housing investment, the number this year is significantly lower than it has been in years past with similar dollar amounts. And I'm just wondering what you attribute that to, if you can. I mean, you may be too new to know what those dynamics are, but we, the numbers in years past with a similar investment from the county, it, it's hard to put this in context because you don't know where other dollars are coming from, and so, any, any sense of that?
Well, the, the only thing that I can assume is that it might be in part to the fact that there are more multifamily units that were being constructed in the previous years, where with this year, or this 2021 round, we actually have, well, I mean, we have 48 multifamily units and only 10 single-family units. But I'm thinking it has something to do with the number of multifamily units that were being developed in those years. And, but I can, I will be more than happy to look into that a little bit further and get back to you. But that's just my assumption.
Well, and I'm wondering if this is a trend, or if this is something that we are seeing this year, and then it might change, I mean, I'm just, because we're so involved in housing, and we're trying to understand where to make our investments, whether it's the home funds or the ARPA funds, or, you know, anything else. And so I'm just wondering, kind of through your professional lens, what you're seeing, why these numbers this year are significantly lower? And, and maybe it is just there are more single families, which is more expensive to build than the multi-unit. So if you could come back or just provide it maybe through email to our offices, I would be really interested in getting a better understanding of that number.
Yeah, and let me just add one last thing to, for this year. Because with, you know, inflation and all of that, you know, the impact of the pandemic on, you know, shipping materials and things of that nature, I do know that costs of supplies and things of that nature have increased significantly. So even though there are fewer units, units being developed, it costs more to develop those units. So that's another assumption as well. But like I said, I will get more detailed information to you that's kind of addresses that a little bit better, but just going off of my assumption of the industry right now and, and the way things are moving.
Well, in the total project cost too, you can see that this year is quite a bit lower than some of those other years too. So yeah, if you could just like, like wrap this up in something that has a little context around it.
Sure.
Because I, I think we're all trying to pay attention to the trends, as I say, as we continue to do more work. And one other thing, and I don't know what page this is, but it's, it's kind of towards the middle of your report. It's the, the funding recommendations themselves, and you've got different columns for the different things that are being identified. Could you add a column in the future that talks about the award that was requested? Because what we have is the recommended award in those dollar amounts, but what I don't see is how much they asked for. So for instance, Habitat, you know, what did, what, the 350,000, does that represent their entire request? Or is that a partial? And, and the reason I ask that is that sometimes when we make investments, and we used to do this at the State House, we make an investment that's partial. Urban Sites is a better example, I guess, of, of kind of a partial investment from the county.
Right.
Obviously, they're getting funds from elsewhere in order to complete this project. And so the question I, and if, if we had another column so that we understood better what they were asking us for, you know, the idea is to make sure that if we're investing 500,000 of our money into the project in Dale High, that we know because of the dollar amount to finish this is closer to 12 million, that that is going to be constructed with this 500,000 and other sources of funding. I trust Urban Sites is going to do that. I, you know, I think we have familiarity with this group. But I think it's helpful for us to know that, yes, the project is going to move forward. Obviously, we're not paying the 11 million, but others are paying into this pot. Again, it's kind of gives you some context for the project.
Yes, yes. And actually, the recommended amounts that are up there now for HERC and for Urban Sites are the actual amounts that they requested.
Okay.
The only one that differed was with Habitat. They requested 450,000. There was an error in their calculation of the units that were being developed in the communities that are considered low poverty. And they were using the, well, the, the units that were being built in, in the, like Springfield Township, which is not considered a low-poverty jurisdiction, but they were using that formula of the 75,000, which is the cap for the, for those communities or jurisdictions, as opposed to 50,000, they should have calculated per unit, 50,000 instead of 75,000. So that adjustment was made. And I actually did speak with Mr. Lee from Habitat about that to find out how they would be able to address that gap that would create, was created by us removing, or with the correct calculation. And he assured me that they would be able to support that gap as well, so.
Okay, and one last question. So are we to understand that these are the three entities that applied for the funding?
Yes.
And there weren't addition, isn't it surprising that there weren't additional applicants?
Well, Commissioner Drew House, I really can't, I really can't speak to that because I kind of came in on the middle of this process. So I really don't know what happened or why there wasn't more interest or participation, you know, for these funds this year. Yeah, but that's, that's all that we received, unfortunately.
My recollection is that these are fairly competitive. And again, I'm trying to look at trends, right? And what, what's kind of happening in the market, to your point earlier, things have gotten more expensive. People have moved to other types of housing that they're building. So I'm just trying to understand the trend.
Okay.
That maybe that indicates that, you know, folks are looking at these funds, and I'm delighted that they're all being accounted for and they're going, all going out the door because that's obviously what we want. But I'm, it's curious to me that there weren't more respondents, so I just, I'm just wondering about.
Well, there was one, there was actually one group that was wanting these funds, but they did, had not like officially applied for them. And unfortunately, by the time that they reached out to me about it, this, the application period had already expired. So there, there was one other group, but they just, just kind of, things, I don't know, they just didn't get it in, and, and they missed this opportunity for that, those funds for 21, so. But I did tell them, you know, they're welcome to come back for the next round of funding, but because of when they were planning to break ground on their project, I don't think that it's going to align with the time, the timing that they need as far as receiving those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, and I know the requested amount was included in our weekly update from our administrator, and that's why I was asking about that extra that was left over. I knew that Habitat for Humanity didn't get their total.
Right.
And so I was trying to see what we could do about that.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was included in that, but it would be good to include it in the presentation also.
Okay.
So thank you so much, yeah.
I just want to, just so I make sure I understand too. I know that you're new and coming in, finishing, you had your predecessor.
Right.
Moving these forward, and she had been with us for a long time. But I do want to highlight that I do remember when I came in, we put some, I think it was American Rescue Dollars or something, some of these projects before you got here, they were not able to complete because they hit COVID and hit some hard times, if I remember correctly. And so we talk about units and not as many units, I don't know, maybe the cost has gone up. But I remember those other projects, we voted, it was recommended through your predecessor, brought back to us and recommended, and our board put more money to finish those projects that had come forward. So we do know cost has gone up. And maybe after those projects had a hard time finishing, maybe that might contributed to why not as many people have jumped out and participated. I understand in this development piece, a lot of people are, you know, hanging on for, you know, looking before they start moving forward because of the cost and obviously now inflation. But even before inflation, I remember your predecessor coming back to us about projects that we had funded through this program and other programs, and they could not finish the projects. And it was recommended by your predecessor to this board and through the administration that we would put more money into those projects so that they could finish and go forward. So we, we do understand that, that from 2016 to 2022, the price has changed as well. So it's good to see those trends and looking forward to your email to show those trends to us. But that might be why not many people are out here ready to build, because the price of lumber and all this other stuff is, you know, whether you're doing it professionally or you're running a Home Depot, then it's just going up, so. But it's good to know those trends, and I look forward to the, the email that you'll provide our board.
I'll be happy to get it to you.
Madam President, just, just very quick data point, if my math is correct, and to the points that have been made by all, I think, all three commissioners. You're just totaling up the, the total project costs and the number of units. The average cost per unit of these projects over the past five years had averaged 171,000. This year, it's averaging 238,000. So that could have some, I'm not saying that that's the rationale for why there's been less demand for the funds, but if, we could be seeing projects being curtailed just because of the, of cost increases. But again, more to come from Maria, so, thank you, Commissioners.
We're going to keep Maria here. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, can I just, Madam President, just add that this is one fund we're talking about. But if there are trends that we are seeing related to single-family versus multi-unit, that costs have gone up, I just think it's important that we understand the world we're living in right now. And because we're talking about a huge investment from our ARPA dollars, and I think this board, I know I personally want to understand what's happening out in the market. And this is a reflection of something that surprises me a little bit because we've got such a great need for increased housing.
Right.
And I, I'm not concerned so much as, you know, just curious to know, you know, what we are looking forward to here as we continue to make these investments. And I, I just want to make sure we get our biggest return on the dollar. So I, I'm grateful for the presentation and just curious to know what you're going to learn and find out. So we'll, we'll look forward to it, thank you.
Okay.
And it, it will be interesting, like when our CDVG funding comes forward, if there's a, a lack of applicants for that, so it'll be interesting.
I, I, okay, yeah, I think actually the CDVG, there may be more participation in, in that fund, in getting those funds, you know, in contrast to home, but like you said, we'll see.
We'll see, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is enterprise zone agreement. Hi, Harry, how are you?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, great to see you all. Thank you for your time. I'm Harry Blanton with the Economic Development Office, also known as Alloy Development. I have with me Ashley Keith from our office, as well as some representatives from the Village of Woodlawn and Man Incorporated. I'll be introducing them in a few seconds. But just want to give you a quick overview of the project. It's an enterprise zone project, as you, as you mentioned. We're very excited about this. Man is a French company that has been in the village for a few years, but they are making a major investment to make a long-term commitment to the village and to the county. They're planning on building a new 100,000 square foot building for $67 million. This project will retain 103 jobs and create 16 new jobs. And we are recommending a 75% for 10-year tax incentive on this project due to the size and the major commitment. And so, so before, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But before that, I think maybe I should introduce our speakers today. We have Anton, Anton Turley, who is the manager of the Village of Woodlawn, who will come up and speak in just a second. And then we'll be introducing Neil Whitman with Man Incorporated, and he will give you a presentation.
Okay, thank you so much.
Without further ado, Mr. Turley.
Thanks. Commissioners, thank you. I'd just like to express the, the Village of Woodlawn's unqualified support for this project. Both Mayor Poole, Vice Mayor Tribue, and the entire council, they realize that investment like this in Woodlawn benefits our village and our community. One of the keys to creating the wood line that we so desire, because we, we have plans to revitalize Springfield Pike, along with our neighbors to the south Wyoming. Key to remaking the community into, and beautifying it are our business. Key to remaking the community and beautifying it are our businesses, like Man. We love the story, the fact that they began in Europe, you know, years ago. They've also expanded in Lebanon. And we hope that they do something similar here in our village. So I just want to say just briefly that the village is in full support of our industry and expanding it and making our village a better place.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And for the company, Man Incorporated, we have Neil Whitman standing in for Mr. Smith, who was unable to come. We also have a Steve who wasn't able to be here today. But Mr. Whitman will give a presentation on the project.
Okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Pleasure to be here today. Yeah, Man is exciting time for us. Man Incorporated is a French organization. Jean and Michelle run the organization. Michelle primarily spends time in the Americas. Jean typically resides in France. And when conversation started with our expansion in Woodlawn, well, first off, I'll tell you, we moved to Woodlawn Labor Day of 2014. We have been there now since. And the growth has been exciting. It's also exciting for us to have some of the local community members work at Man as well. I can tell you, we've had some folks live as close that they commute to work by way of their feet. So really exciting that they live in the neighborhood. And we are currently a fourth-generation organization privately owned. And what's really nice for me and the folks who work at Man is Samantha Man is now being mentored to become fifth-generation ownership. And that's exciting because for me, that's stability and that's longevity for the organization and the community. We are celebrating our 150-year anniversary. Actually, it was the prior year, but COVID, like everybody else. So we're celebrating that this year, and that is exciting as well. But we do have, in the Americas, we do have the Lebanon site, which is somewhere around 800,000 square feet. And then to the right is the Woodlawn facility. That is approximately 32,000 square feet. So we started on the expansion plan discussions and formal planning about two years ago. The facility will be around 118,000 square feet. It will be detached from the existing facility. It is a $67 million investment. And just the employment numbers, I'm excited about that. And it just shows you the progressiveness of the ownership. We did go from 87 to 103. That increase currently was to be proactive. So when the new facility came online, we had folks who were trained and didn't walk into that situation blind. So we did hire some folks proactively. And we also do anticipate further growth from there. And this is an overview of the site. So to the north is the existing R&amp;D facility and offices. We've got the current manufacturing site. And to the left, that will be the location of the new facility. So they will both still be manufacturing. We will not be abandoning the existing site. It will be handling certain disciplines of manufacturing. And then the new site will do others. There's a fairly accurate artist's rendition of an angle of the site. I don't expect that to change very much. There is the site, you can now see both sites. So the shipping and receiving road is connected and goes past the existing facility and the new facility. The lower structure that's in the foreground, that is offices, quality control, and wellness area for the folks. And again, a quick look at the inside of the facility. The green is the warehousing, the light green. The gray is the manufacturing area. And then the blue, red, yellow, and dark green are those wellness areas I spoke of. So very exciting for us. And again, I can't speak too much for this because Steve Smith was supposed to present today. But like some others, he doesn't have power this afternoon. So he's working on that. But, you know, we are working with the Hamilton County Development Office, the Village of Woodlawn. And, you know, the project we hope to have complete July, sometime in 2024, provided we don't have supply chain issues like everybody else. Questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Just a couple comments. It's always good to hear about payroll increasing, staffing increasing, inclusion of the residents in that area that are working in the company. And just really happy you had an opportunity to expand anywhere. But of course, if you can do it right where you are, that's great. So the 118,000 square feet, what was there, just vacant land there?
Yes, that's approximately about nine acres that we. The site, I think in its entirety, is roughly 22 to 24 acres. So we also own that nine acres that's been unused.
Okay, very good. And so your tax abatement recommendation, I think, is a reasonable one. And I go through that area often. And it's really expanding, and it would be great for that area. So thank you so much.
Very welcome.
I will pass it over to my colleague, Vice President Reese.
Thank you for the presentation. And certainly, thank you for looking to expand within Hamilton County in Woodlawn, Ohio. And I did get a chance to talk to Mayor Poole, who's very excited about this project. I do have one question on this. Would this help with your payroll, your income tax? Or would this help with, could you, Woodlawn, if you could talk about that? I don't know if you can come back up. I'm sorry. I just.
That's okay.
It's very important. Thank you.
Like most municipalities, we rely heavily upon income tax revenue. And the more jobs that are created, yes, it will help with our tax revenue. And we can use that money, like I said earlier, to invest it back into Woodlawn and to work on certain beautification projects. We have the revitalization of Springfield Pike and a couple of other things that we have in the works.
Yeah, I think that's important because, again, we represent cities, villages, and townships. And this is a village and looking to expand even in a tough economy. So, Madam President, I will support this expansion. That's going to help the Village of Woodlawn and also help with the business and hopefully additional jobs that would be there. Because the green space is nice, but it's not producing any jobs. So we want to have some jobs. And of course, building it will be jobs also as well. So again, I know Village of Woodlawn hasn't asked for too much from us lately. I know more to come.
That's going to change.
I know you said more to come, but we want to get out ahead of it. But again, I just want to say that I do support this. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And just another note, too, something that's exciting, is when we first started the project, we came up with a design, and it was for X amount of years. And our ownership got back to us and said, listen, I don't want anything for years. Make the flavors for all your favorite snacks.
Okay, that's helpful.
So what about the fragrance part?
We do have, good question, we do actually have a fragrance entity. It is in New Jersey. You, it's not good to put fragrance with flavors together.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, and so, yeah, that's helpful. I'm just wondering about the environmental impact of the build that you're talking about. And have you, it looks like it's pretty, in a green space.
Yes.
From the photo that you have provided. So are there retention basins?
Yes, there are.
Yeah, so can you help us better understand that a little bit and what's being done there?
Sure, I'll do my best. So yes, we do have retention basins. We do put a lot of effort into air handling systems as well. It's very important for the Man organization, the ownership, for sustainability and being a good neighbor in the community. So it's important to me, when I come to work every day, I do my own air quality check, so to speak. And it's important for me not to smell anything outside of our facility. So we have scrubbers that clean the air before they exit the facility. And again, the new facility, all of that equipment will be sized appropriately. We are also doing research into geothermal, solar, you know, for sustainability. It's important, again, once we build, there is a plan to replace whatever shrubbery or trees that we have to remove for the facility.
Okay, that's helpful. And it's a huge relief that the village is represented here, by the way, because you all are already manufacturing this. So there's already this concern, and I was thinking about the smell, too. Or the fragrance, maybe I should say, not the smell or odor. MSD is in the room, and I'm used to talking to them about smells. But anyway, so it's very helpful that the community is welcoming of this project, knowing that you're going to increase your capacity and that potential for that release. So I appreciate the information. Yeah, and I would have asked you about the community support, but clearly, you've got that already. So I'm happy to support this request as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you guys do really well with the smell, because I go past, I've never smelled.
My, let me.
Do you remember Givaudan? That was, oh, sorry.
Okay.
It's interesting you say that. Do you remember Givaudan that was in Hartwell? So if you went up 75, you pretty much knew what they were manufacturing that day because you smelled it. And we've never received those complaints from their facilities. So we are very appreciative of the fact that they have those air scrubbers and that they're being good neighbors.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Harry. What's our next step?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. The next steps are, this will be before you on June 30th for your consideration. And just as a reminder, on Thursday, you'll be reviewing Stegler Supply again from Forest Park. So that will be coming for you for approval. This one will come June 30th. So we appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming, yeah. Tell the mayor I said hello.
I will do that.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District SR 128 Extension. And I'm going to have our administrator kind of get us started on this. Welcome.
Just, thank you, Madam President. Just very, very briefly, pleased to have Chris Habel here from Frost Brown Todd, who's here on behalf of the Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District. This is to discuss a proposed sewer extension project up 128 that would bring with it various development and environmental benefits. This project's been on the horizon for some time. I think this may be the first real legislative exposure that the board has had to the Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District. So I think Mr. Habel is going to go through a little bit of that background as well for the board. But there is also some of the county's ARPA dollars that are associated with this project as well. So as we're preparing to bring some agreements forward to the board, thought this would be a good time to lay out the project in a lot more detail publicly and so the board could ask questions. So with that, Mr. Habel.
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Chris Habel. I'm the member in charge at Frost Brown Todd. I am also an environmental attorney and civil and environmental engineer before that, with a heavy background in construction. So I will give a little history, won't dive deep. But the Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District was created in 2000. It is a revised Code 6119 Regional Sewer District. Its territory is just Whitewater Township. It has broad authority, just like MSD does, to sewer and also provide water service. But we have always cooperated and worked together with MSD and the county to bring these projects to life. So the first, fly through that. So the first, these projects really are driven at the environmental issue, much more so than the development issue. All of the projects, including the one before you right now. Yes, development follows, but the real issue has been trying to get sewer to rural areas where they are dense, small residential, sort of stacked on top of each other, many failing septic systems, and public health issues, trying to resolve those with a centralized sewer system. So the first one was Hooven, which is a very small community off 128, kind of right where US 50 and 128 meet, just a little bit north. It was built as a working-class community when the Chevron refinery was in operation across the street. That area had significant public health issues. So the first issue was to get across the river. So the very first project, this screen is not great, but you can see the little blue line, that is coming from Indian Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. So MSD's plant with excess capacity on the right, under the Great Miami River and starting up Route 128. The Kroger facility and other commercial development then came after this at that intersection of 128 and 50. So that was the first project we did. We did the design, we did the construction. MSD approved all the plans. It was per their spec. Ultimately, MSD took over that infrastructure, and MSD and the county paid for the cost of that project. The second phase was to get up into Hooven. So this purple line, the Hooven community, is off there to the left. I think it was about 170 residences that were picked up in that project. We, again, designed and built that project to the specs and approval of MSD. This one was funded with a combination of assessments, assessment credits, other sorts of funding mechanisms. So every time we do these, we work with the funding resources that the Whitewater Township District can bring to bear, along with the county and MSD's funding. So that project picked up Hooven. It also went up 128, about as far as we can go. The Chevron refinery site is on the right there, sort of in the Oxbow. And they have reserved capacity for future redevelopment of that site someday. So that pretty much maxed out the available capacity in the Indian Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant for MSD. So MSD is getting customers, we're getting rid of the environmental issue. You're getting a little bit of development coming along with it. The next step was then to go to the north, up in Miami Town area. So Miami Town, similarly, was sitting on the wrong side of the river from the existing wastewater treatment plant. So the Taylor Creek Plant is on the right side of the Magenta Line. That's MSD's existing plant with excess capacity. MSD built the line over and under the Great Miami River to get into the, literally, the edge of Miami Town. So they built that project. Then Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District came in and built the following project, which is the Green Lines, which picked up all of the existing residences in Miami Town, which, again, there were a number of failed septic systems, all sorts of public health issues. So we built that piece on the back. And again, this was some state water pollution control loan fund grant, loans that we took out, sewer assessment credits that the county contributed. Each project kind of gets funded a little bit differently. The last piece, and the significant piece, is the Green Line coming down kind of on an angle. The bottom of this screen is I-275 and State Route 128, or I-74 and 128 coming together. So we came down to the bottom of that intersection. And MSD was actually planning to go under the highway, but they asked us to do that. So Whitewater Township went ahead and proceeded with that project to bring sewer to the south side of I-74 on 128. So that's where it stops and stands as of today. So the project before you, well, this was the cross, so this is the crossing. You can see a little better there, the little yellow extended on down. So right now, the sewer ends just south of 275, 74, at the 128 exit. There are two mobile home parks that have significant, there's hundreds of residents in those communities that have failed, there's a failed, two failed systems that EPA would like removed. There are a number of other residents. There are also businesses down along that who have been there for a long time. Several of them have been trucking their waste monthly, daily, weekly, for a long time, just until this project comes along. So they know it's coming. We haven't been able to tell them when, but hopefully, we can tell them when very soon. So this next phase, as Jeff mentioned, it was started many years ago with some design work, starting back in 2012. MSD asked us to use their prior planning that we had, that they had already done. So we weren't reinventing the wheel and coming up with new things and new ideas. We went through the county and MSD's business case evaluation for the project. It went through, it was ultimately reviewed by two engineering. It went through, it was ultimately reviewed by two engineering firms in MSD. And this current Phase 1 project, which is what's coming before you, was approved. This shows, this map shows in detail, the darker gray to the right is Phase 1. So on the far right corner there is the highway interchange where we would start and come down 128. And the only request at the moment is really this dark gray, because that's where a lot of the existing residences' development exists. Phase 2, if it were to happen someday, could connect into this system, but that is a more sparsely populated area and not as many public health issues there. So the proposal before you is to build Phase 1 of this project down 128 and really continue the plan that has been on the table for many years and been built in phases along the way. That is not a great picture, but it's showing the same thing, coming down 128, again, off the highway. So after the BCE was approved, $1.4 million was released for engineering and right-of-way. Most of the engineering is complete. It's 90, the engineering is basically finished, we need to acquire the right-of-way. And under this agreement, the Sewer District would acquire the right-of-way. It would be deeded back over to the county commissioners and MSD, as all of their other infrastructure is on the back end. So we'll get the right-of-way with those, with that straight up in the agreement. The only reason the design is not finished is just if we have to move around the right-of-way issue, we'll do it. But otherwise, the design is pretty much finished. And at this point, the overall project financing, who's doing what in the project, how it's going to get pulled off, is set forth in the agreement that's now going to be coming to you. This is just a quick letter from Ohio EPA to let you know, I've been working with Dave Edelstein, the county's environmental attorney, Holly Diana Christie, counsel for the city, throughout, you know, the last several years trying to get this pulled together. Ohio EPA is well aware of this project. They have been sending us letters, as the Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District, as opposed to the county getting letters, saying, when is this project going to be built? It needs to be built, it needs to address the environmental issues that are there. So we do not anticipate Ohio EPA causing any trouble. In fact, they regularly call us and ask, when is the PTI application coming in? So the real issue is how do we fund the project? ARPA has been significantly helpful. And in the memo that the county put out, there was, I think, $9 million set aside to address wastewater issues in Western Hamilton County. This is obviously Western Hamilton County. So we have proposed $5 million of ARPA funds to fund this project. It's going to be about current estimate, who knows what's going on with inflation, but $9.5 million is the current engineer's estimate of cost. And we think that's pretty close to, you know, where things will land. The rest of the money, we are looking for infrastructure dollars coming from the state of Ohio, coming from the infrastructure bill. As a small rural regional sewer district, we can position ourselves to get some things that MSD might not be able to get. So if we can pull it down, additional dollars for that, that will reduce the overall project cost. But to the extent we can't, we'll borrow water pollution control loan fund dollars at our rate, which is 0%. And then we work with the county. Ultimately, the county gets this infrastructure, MSD gets these customers. For lack of a better description, we're a public developer who's building this infrastructure to serve the public good. They ultimately get handed over to the county and MSD as your infrastructure and your customers, which is why it's being built to all of MSD's specs and standards. So in terms of next steps, our board is meeting tonight, actually, to vote and approve the agreement that is being proposed. I believe this will be coming to you for consideration on June 30th. Once approved, MSD would transfer an additional $500,000 to Whitewater to complete the design and the right-of-way acquisition. Thereafter, the county and Whitewater will enter a separate agreement for ARPA funds. We will, as I said, continue to pursue grants and other money. We'll put the PTI application into Ohio EPA, and hopefully we will get moving on this project about this time next year is the goal. So I went through a lot of information there. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. As you were saying, this has been a priority for many years. And so the fact that you were saying, say, Phase 1 for State Route 128 Extension, we have the ability and capability with the funding that's come through to make this happen through the ARPA money. So, and to think about people that don't have septic systems and things like that, environmentally, it will affect all of us in the long run. So thank you for presenting this. So, Vice President Reese.
Thank you for the presentation and individuals, because I'm out that way a lot on 74 and getting off and getting back on 275 and so that area. I have one point of clarification from the, maybe the administrator, it said $5 million in ARPA. So we have already put that out? Is that already budgeted?
Yeah, so we had $9 million that we put in for sewer issues in the ARPA fund, and we had recommended $5 million for this particular project. Yes.
Great. Second question that I just have for you. You mentioned small businesses along that way and as well as mobile homeowners. With this development moving forward, are we looking at any displacement of small businesses or homeowners? Or what is, what would be the interruption with them?
Yeah, great question. In fact, I think the answer was, it would be better. Some of those business owners literally come to the board meeting every month, just begging, asking, when is this going to be ready to go so they can stop the cost of trucking the waste away? So I think, I'm aware of zero business departure. They are wanting this badly. I can tell you from going to the meetings, they frequently come and they stare at me and I say, we're working on it, we're working on it. On the residential side, with regard to those two mobile home communities, they will, their landlord, the owner of those properties, you know, we will run a sewer to that property and disconnect the package treatment plant, and they would be master meter customers into MSD. So they're not going to be individual residences who are, you know, it would be in their property agreement with their landlord, but it's not going to be a scenario where they would be, each individual property owner would be connected up and having to pay a cost of a connection fee, that sort of thing. That is the way the plan is for now, to implement that with regards, I mean, the last thing we want to do is move people out. We're trying to solve the environmental health issue with minimal impact to pockets as best we possibly can.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's very much appreciative, since we just ended a long conversation about affordable housing.
I was-
But I wanted to just also ask about the interruption. Is there any interruption, like, from a construction standpoint, is my point?
128 will be, will be a bit of a challenge for a little bit, as that project's going on. We'll try to maintain traffic as best we can. I mean, one of the beauties, if you will, of the Sewer District is, the board members all live there. They all know each other, everybody kind of knows them. So they're really trying to look out to make sure this works as best we can. We've also been kicking around, I don't know that it's going to happen, but if there is a need for a water line replacement or other infrastructure at the same time, that we try to coordinate that as much as we can. So 128 is interrupted as limitedly as possible. And I think we'll try to be out of the right-of-way as much as we possibly can, but there will be some traffic interruption that occurs, just the nature of, the nature of the project.
Gotcha. And then, of course, we got the $5 million and then the $500,000 transfer. What is the total cost of the project?
The to, so it's about $500,000 of finish engineering, right-of-way, all of that. Then it is, the current engineer's estimate of cost of the project is 9.4, just call it 9.5. So five would be ARPA, and then we have four and a half to solve for. The four and a half, we could go get a loan, and we're in line to get a loan. We also did apply for the state's builds grant. We were the number one project in the county, but unfortunately, the county didn't get much money out of that grant. So we didn't get funded out of that. However, we have qualified for a 0% loan through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. So worst-case scenario, we'll borrow four and a half, that should be 0% on favorable terms. That'll have to be repaid. Again, if infrastructure dollars from DC or Columbus start flowing and this project can qualify for any, that will just lessen the amount we have to borrow.
Gotcha. Because I saw on here, you said, if you borrow, you would be looking for us through MSD to repay.
Yeah, so the, so again, this is because, at the end of the day, this becomes the county's infrastructure and MSD's customers. We really don't have a means of generating revenue to repay a debt. We charge a small fee to the customers for our district operations. So it would be, at the end of the day, the county's infrastructure and MSD's customers. That's why we've said, if this, you know, if there has to be money borrowed, and that's how the other projects have been done as well. Ultimately, MSD takes the customers pretty much on day one and starts generating revenue. The bonds, loans, what have you, get paid back over time.
Gotcha. Well, you know, obviously, we also talked about, not just affordable housing, but we also talked about environment. And to have, you know, people shipping waste, you know, and it's 2022, obviously, that's, you know, not a good environmental situation.
They're, they're taking it to MSD.
Yeah.
They're getting rid of it correctly.
Yeah, they're doing it correctly.
But it's costing a lot of money to send a truck out and drive a truck down the road, burning fuel every day. So, yes.
Yeah, that's just the thought of it.
Yes.
It's, you know, antiquated. So certainly open to supporting this. Those are my questions. I just wanted to make sure we understood the, the loan component and what we would be on the hook for.
The, in the way-
But you're saying that that would come from the new customers that will now be paying a MSD fee.
The way the agreement is worded, the terms and conditions of that agree, of loan, would be agreed to by the county before you're on the hook. That's the way that, the actual agreement that's coming to you. So you will know, here's, you know, here's what grant money we were able to get, here's the amount we're going to have to borrow, here's the terms of the borrowing, and then working out the repayment schedule would all be, again, subject to county approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm a big fan of this project.
Thank you.
This, I, I do remember when some of the conversations started around this, like, four or five years ago, and the public health problem that resides in this area for these folks who have failing septic tanks. And I think they've all been waiting, they, we got this. You know, we're-
Thank you. And the infrastructure bill is supposedly close to passage, but the reason why I bring that up, we don't know what politicians, but you were talking about the possibility of loans. How long would you wait to see if this bill is going to pass before you even seek that opportunity?
Yeah, so, you know, we probably won't bid this project until next spring or even next summer. So that gives time for if we can find more grants. That's where we're going to know what the final dollar cost is, how much we're going to need to borrow, or how much additional grant we've received. So hopefully by then, some of, there will be more clarity, shall we say, on the infrastructure bill and how it's going to trickle down.
All right. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
Okay. We have one item, other than our executive session, MSD operating budget, first quarter report. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Let me, I brought extra copies in case everyone does not have this. Okay, good afternoon. We're here today to talk through our operating budget based on our first quarter report. And since I came today on this topic instead of an engineering project, I wanted to introduce some other folks at MSD that work on this side of the issues. So I have with me here today Amanda Gray. She is our interim superintendent of our wastewater administration division. So that's where we do all of our accounting, payroll processing, contracting. It also includes our HR group. Amanda recently stepped into this role. And I have Joseph Schuster, who is our senior budget analyst. He joined us back at the beginning of the year to fill that role. So both Amanda and Joseph helped prepare this information. And what I passed out was both a report that hopefully you have already seen. This is just a first quarter operating budget report. We do them every quarter. And then I included something hot off the press that I just shared with the city manager, and I went ahead and sent it to the county administration myself. And that's just regarding our state financial audit that is done every year on MSD's finances. So not really for discussion, other than I just wanted to share the good news that once again, the sixth year in a row, we did have a clean financial audit report from the state. But with the, the first quarter report, so I just wanted to walk through what we're saying here and answer any questions. Generally, you know, the first quarter-
Diana, if I can interject?
Yes, sure.
I see the date on here. So are you saying that you sent this via email during this time? Or when did, you said we should have seen this before.
Yes. So, and you may not have seen it. So generally, the practice with our quarterly budget information is, I, of course, share all this with the city manager, who is my boss. I'm usually the one that sends it to the county administration. So I would have sent it to Assistant Administrator Christman, Holly Christman, and I believe it went to Joe Graff as well, on, on or about that date. And then we discussed having a presentation for the board, which is what we're here to do today. So if you haven't seen it, I'm going to tell you what it says. So-
Well, that's not the point, though.
Okay.
Remember, we had gotten much better at stuff, information being sent to us ahead of time. Like, for instance, you, you were, you're presenting today. It probably would have been good to send this to us, I don't know, three or four days ago, because that kind of limits the amount of questions.
I think it's helpful to see. And what we're showing is the committed budget on that first table, that we have both expenditures. So that's where we've actually paid the money. The money has now left MSD for expenses. And then we also have committed, meaning those dollars have been committed to, to a project or to pay for something. So you can see there on the table at the top of page two, you know, the yellow is what we have committed to date in each of those categories. So we're overall trending where we would expect to be. And the approved budget, you know, we're looking really good across the board. But I'd like to get into the details. So if you drop down to table two for personnel. So our personnel, we break this out, and the approved budget from you all every year is broken out based on our divisions. I don't need to go through the details of those, but for example, OOD is for the Office of Director, and wastewater treatment is WWT. So that's the largest one, that division. So the total committed for our personnel is 20.8%. And, and that's generally just under what we would project with personnel. We would, you know, you would think we would be at the end of the first quarter, 25% of the way through. We are trending a little bit behind. This is not unusual for us. And there's really two main reasons, and those are summarized at the top of page three. The first one is, we do have a position vacancy. We always anticipate to have positions vacant and work hard to fill them. Sometimes it's, you know, we have more vacancy than inspect, than expected at certain times of the year. So we have an average of 10% vacancy during the first quarter. The second reason was the capital labor reimbursement allowance. And this is within our engineering division. The personnel costs of that division, some of those are charged to capital, since they work a large amount of their time on capital projects. We're able to charge those funds to a capital allowance. But that reimbursement, that accounting exercise is done later in the year, in the third quarter. So it trends, again, we trend a little bit behind at the end of the first quarter. We do have one issue that has been ident, two issues that have been identified, and we would like to bring to atten- and we would like to bring to attend, the board's attention now. We believe before the end of the year, we will need to request a transfer within the personnel budget from an interdepartmental, or interdivisional transfer. So we have, we have underfunded our IT division's personnel expenditures by about $350,000. This was really due to an organizational change we made. We used to, they used to be all part of one division under wastewater administration. And in rebudgeting that, really just the estimating that was done to pull those personnel out for their own, for their own division, wasn't accounted for entirely. So we're not concerned, though, that we would need more funding, because we do have that excess, we do have some excess funds budgeted in our wastewater engineering division, that once we have the capital, once we do the capital reimbursement for that personnel, we would just need to transfer the funding from engineering to IT. The other expenditure that would need to be funded was an amount that was not budgeted. Again, just in oversight, the city's early retirement incentive program had a payment, the contribution that's required, it's already, you know, part of those retirement agreements, and that's about $560,000. So both of those amounts would be covered by an interdepartmental transfer that we would bring to the board, probably at the end of, sometime in the third quarter, when the amount is more clearly defined. The, the third issue that we're highlighting here, that we're watching very closely on the personnel side, is the, our labor negotiations. So our Ask Me Labor Union previously negotiated a 5% cost of living increase. So that is already in place. The other labor union, the Code Labor Union, is in negotiations right now. So really, depending on what that, what they are able to determine for their cost of living increases, we did not budget for all the employees to get a 5% COLA. So it could potentially be higher than what was budgeted for. In the end, though, we do still believe that the only adjustment this year will be to cover those first two items, and that the rest would be absorbed through our vacancy. So again, the recommendation at the bottom of page three for personnel is that we would bring to the board towards the end of the year, an interdepartmental budget adjustment. For your information, we've done this pretty frequently in the past. Just organizationally, there's often changes in personnel. So quickly moving to the non-personnel, that's, you can see that table three on page four. So again, this is broken out by division. We show you what the approved budget was, the total committed as of the end of the first quarter. And overall, the percentage for our non-personnel is over 50%. This, again, is okay, and is where we would expect to be this time of year. Again, having committed those funds, I mean, those, for those funds are committed to a contract or committed to a project. It doesn't mean we have overspent from our budget. In fact, we've been looking, watching very closely, even through year to date, now that we're towards the end of our second quarter. We've been watching very closely the, the one area that we did have concerns with this year, which is inflationary increases for a lot of our equipment and utility costs associated with the wastewater treatment process. And we, we do appear to have sufficient funds based on everything we know today. So we did bring that to your attention in the budget process, and you approved an increase to cover what we were anticipating would be increases, especially with our power. And so, again, to date, we appear to have sufficient budget to cover all of our non-personnel expenditures through the end of the year. The additional items, when you move to page five, we have our sewer backup response. You know, again, those are both personnel and non-personnel dollars. We track that both quarterly, and, and we're always watching that closely. As of the end of the, the first quarter, we had 34.6% of the program expenditures committed. Since that time, we have had a very wet spring. We have had a lot of big storms. We have not had anything that has, you know, had a significant impact on our budget to date. But I think we will have a better projection and forecast of, of the rest of the year after the second quarter. So really, the last month or so, all of the work that we've done responding to some of the storms, cleanings we've performed, and any claims, you know, haven't been fully realized in terms of our, our budget. But nothing to suggest that we're going to need more funds there either, as of what we've experienced to date. Not much on debt service. That's pretty typical where we would be this year. And the capital outlay, again, those are, we manage that in those expenditures based on the budget that was provided. The, the second to last page has a revenue update. This is based on our projections. We were pretty, pretty accurate there. We have our total operating revenue at exactly 25% at the end of the first quarter. So that looks very good as well. And in conclusion, I, I think, again, we feel as though we are looking very good for our operating budget for the remainder of 2022. We do have the one interdepartmental transfer that we expect to do. And there are a few unknown factors that we really just have to continue to watch as the year carries on. Again, those, those labor negotiations that are ongoing, any more inflationary increases, and of course, unforeseen weather events that would have a significant impact on the SBU budget. We do have our second quarter closing at the end of June. And we would have a report, again, sometime in July, towards the end of the month, that we will share, be sure to share with you directly. So that's all I had on the budget. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Several questions. I think maybe if I had gotten this ahead, I wouldn't have as many. But I will ask a few. And also, I requested to, with Jeff, if we could get you in, because I haven't, we haven't seen you in quite a while. I'd like to ask that you come in every two weeks to see us. This is just, this MSD issue is just too much to rush through, to not see people, not to get, I mean, maybe there are written updates to other people, but this is not okay with me. Maybe it is with my other colleagues. You talked about IT. They reorganized to, to their own division, which ended up with a $350,000 personnel need. But correct me if I'm wrong, you indicated that that money would be transferred from the engineering office to, to fill that need?
That's correct. Just to be clear, though, the IT division, we did not really expand. It was just, they used to be budgeted together with another division. And in pulling them out, just how we estimated the personnel cost wasn't entirely accurate. So that is, that is otherwise correct, yeah.
Okay. And I'm looking here, and this is some of the issues we have, that I have. I can only speak for me. That city council decided to provide a 5% cost of living increase for all eligible employees, which exceeds the 2% COLA assumptions made in the budget, which is nice that people can, say, increase more, and, and we're the one, ones that will have to pay it. So I'm just wondering what consideration, I mean, I, I guess my point is, if you're not paying the bill, you can increase it as much as you want. And that's what happened, because in your budget, obviously, you thought 2% would be good. I'm not saying that through negotiations and mediations that it may go up to three, but just to say 5%, knowing that you don't have to pay the bill, is, doesn't rub me very well. I'm looking at recommendations. You said a transfer, the budget adjustment would permit the transfer of $920,000 from personnel appropriation from wastewater. So are you basically saying that most of the lack of money that we have in different areas, we will be able to transfer from other areas? There'd be no really additional monies that has to be put in? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Just a couple more items. I'm going all the way back to, to pa, I'm going to page five about the SBU program. And we had mentioned before about the ability for more residents to be eligible for this program. And maybe there should be a look at the requirements of who is eligible. Now, maybe legally, I'm sure legally, you've decided who's eligible, but how we can expand that where more people are eligible? And if they're not eligible for SBU, what additional help could they get on those sewer backups? We said the first quarter reimbursement claims were $38,000. That's thinking about all the rain and all the sewer problems, and why, you know, $38,000 is, is not a lot of money if, if more people qualified. And I know there are a lot of people that are really going through heck because of the backups of their sewer. So I mentioned this several months ago to look at the requirements. Are they, do we need to streamline, add on, or look at how we can help more people?
If I could, so in response to that, we, you know, we'd be happy to come talk further about the SBU program at any time. Our eligibility, you know, when we investigate the sewer backup reports, we're basing our decision on what the legal parameters are for us to use ratepayer dollars. So if it is not within the eligibility of the sewer backup program or otherwise, something that is covered because it's a problem with MSD's sewer system or infrastructure, we're not able to, to, you know, provide any program services, because that would be, you know, again, we're using ratepayer dollars. So we, we feel as though there isn't any open questions in terms of those eligibility requirements, but we'd be happy to come in and discuss it in more detail.
And that would be great. I see we had 1,159 SBU investigations. And to me, that doesn't reach where people are. There's just too many people that are being, in the gap or being lost. And so do we have this program and then maybe create another program? I don't know. We don't want, need to talk about that now, but I certainly would be happy to discuss what this whole program entails. I believe that's all I have. And, and once again, I'd like to have you in every two weeks. And please, whoever needs to do it, give us our information in advance, a few days in advance. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, Madam President, just, just to clarify on that, and I know sometimes looking at, you know, it's a, it's a big, well, you know, several page document, a lot of information. But this is, in fact, the same report that was forwarded on May 15th. So, you know, you're, you're just seeing this version of it today, but this is the same document that went out on May 15th. So I just want to make sure that
Yeah, and that's fine. But if it's on the agenda, and the people that are presenting know it's on the agenda, then it needs to come to us three or four days ahead, so we can review it. May, you know, you know how much mail we get and emails and information? So I thank you for that clarification, but I'd like to see it before then. Okay. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. You know, some of the questions that you raised, certainly I agree with. I'm not going to raise all of those again. But I will say, on the couple issues that I wanted to highlight, circle them here, wanted to go back to the early retirement incentive program. Expense has not previously been budgeted by MSD. Per the agreement reached by the City of Cincinnati, the contribution by MSD, you have its $560,882 per year. My question is, the first sentence, and maybe I'm, you know, I'm still wrapping my arms around all of MSD and trying to, I'm still wrapping my arms around MSD and trying to get, you know, everything. But I didn't understand this, the early retirement incentive program, so we have a program. And then you said expense has not been previously budgeted by MSD. So I'm confused how we have a program, but we, we didn't put it in the budget.
Sure. So let me explain. So during COVID in 2020, the city, you know, are, all of the MSD employees, the city employees are part of the city's retirement program, unless they're under the state's program. And the city offered a early retirement incentive program for that, for a short period of time only. It was opened and closed. There was about six months, they only had a few months, actually, to, to apply. And so employees had to be within two years of retirement, and they could retire early. This was something that was decided by, you know, prior city administration. As part of that, along with other retirement expenditures that, you know, once one of our employees retires, that we are obligated to pay for, there was a separate expense. It was paid. And Joseph, just confirm, is that correct? Yeah. So it was, we did pay this already in 2021. We just didn't include it in our budget in terms of, it comes out of the personnel dollars and the retirement, you know, is, is part of the benefits of each employee's compensation. We just didn't include it. So it was an oversight. You know, we, we did have some, we had a vacancy, and we had some issues with this budget position prior to Joseph joining us. So it really is not much more than an oversight, but the program benefit has opened and closed. It's a finite, you know, number of individuals. We had about 50 employees from MSD that did retire under the eRep. You know, they retired early, and this is just a payment that has to be factored in, so.
Okay. So I just want to go back to this, because I'm just going to, issues requiring interdepartmental transfers. And you, you list this program, the early retirement incentive program that you all knew about. You forgot to put it in the budget that we voted on, right? I guess is what you're saying. So is the amount half a million dollars, $560,882?
That's correct.
Or is that, so that has to be transferred from another line item?
It, yes, it, it will be, we have sufficient personnel dollars to cover it. It's just not, it wasn't accounted for in the proper, you know, line item division of MSD. So we will cover it, and we will be including it in our budget going forward, so that we don't have to transfer during the year.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, because we went, we spent quite a bit of back and forth about the budget. So I just, you know, and I thought everything had been covered. Where is this coming from? Where, where would you take it away from to put it in? You said it's interdepartmental. What department you taking it from?
Well, so our wastewater engineering department currently has, based on the number of employees and the work they do, we have a capital allowance. So because they work on capital projects, their funded, a portion of their personnel budget every year is funded from our capital program, which, again, is already budgeted. So when we make that reimbursement to ourselves, we will have excess funds in the wastewater engineering division. Again, that's also just an exercise in budgeting. We don't necessarily mean to overfund the wastewater engineering division, but that is where we are today. So we have excess dollars based on the personnel we have in engineering to cover that. Next year, it will be corrected, and we, you know, we would properly account for those dollars where they need to be instead of, you know, in the department of engineering.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because that seems like a lot to overbudget. You're talking about a half, you're talking about a million dollars, almost half a million dollars here. Over half a million dollars, $560,882. And then you come in and you tell us that you need more money. We got to go up on rates. And I'm saying, if we got money hidden over here and hidden over there, extra money, you know, I'm trying to keep the, I'm just going to be honest, I'm trying to keep the rates down on the taxpayers. They don't want to go up on rates. And then you come in and say, you knew that there was a program, I guess, you put it in here, the early retirement incentive program. And you admit that you didn't budget for it, but then you said the engineers, you had an extra $560,882 hanging around at a time when we're trying to keep the price down on the taxpayers. You know, that's what people is watching, would, would be asking. You said, hey, it's no big deal. We'll switch it over, and that's covered. So it's just, people started thinking the trust issue. And me, I want to make sure I'm getting accurate information before I make any decisions. And I thought we had went back and forth over what you presented us for your budget. So I, I do want to highlight that. I have some concern about that. Also, I had some concern about some other components in here. Under your conclusion and summary, page, on page seven, I, I do share the concern that Madam President put forward. You gave us a number, and then the city came with another number. You gave us a number, and then the city came with another number. And then at the end, we've got to write the check for that number. So I do have concern about that. But she has already highlighted that and I won't go into it. But item number three, you say unforeseen weather events and related impacts to SBU expenses and wastewater treatment and collection operation costs, including overtime. And maybe I'm misunderstanding, does MSD connect with those folks that deal with weather patterns? Because we're heading into different weather patterns now, global warming and everything. Do you have any experts that look into that to be able to kind of help forecast? Because we're seeing these various storms and we had a big rain yesterday, something that we normally, like you said, don't have, but we've been having them the last maybe two years. I know my basement flooded three times already just from these rains. So do we have anyone that, with all the money that we have over there and all the people we hire, do we have experts that look at that? And if so, then it's kind of not unforeseen. I mean, of course, Mother Nature, we can't predict her, but there is some things, the dobblers and all those people. Do we have experts that can look at those weather trends and then help us estimate? Because obviously, we're having more tornadoes, it has been happening, warnings, watches, even our EMA director, he does a great job, Nick. I don't know if you work with him, but he does a great job of being able to foresee things and has a better job of budgeting for things because he talks about being ready. Do you have anything like that instead of just saying we don't know what's coming?
Yes. Not only do we have experts in that field, but we have, I think, others that are outside of MSD, look to MSD as experts in a lot of these areas. We have an entire division of engineers and hydraulic modelers that are like some of the most advanced in their field in terms of not only looking at weather trends, but also understanding the impact on our system and in our region. We have real-time data, not only on our system, but on rainfall amounts. In fact, anyone could go to our website and see the totals just in, I think we have 50 or so throughout the county where you can see the exact totals of rain. So we're very in tune with weather trends, with climate. We participate in a lot of the most, you know, I guess, the nationwide and even worldwide, you know, councils on weather and climate issues. But with respect to this particular, you know, comment and summary here with our SBU budget and our budget overall, I know in the past, and perhaps prior to you being here, we had, we have had some storms that are, you know, for example, a 500-year weather event, and the cost of that is, you know, not expected to be seen every year. So we don't expect that to happen this year and therefore we don't budget for it every year, but the understanding has always been, you know, let's try to budget for what we anticipate in a year with all the ups and downs and spikes we'll have. So big storms, small storms, dry spells. And that's been around, you know, 10 to 12 million the last few years, knowing that, you know, nobody can predict when the next 500-year storm will come. It will not be 500 years from now, I'll tell you that. But, you know, if, we will, you know, present that to the board if that happens, and we have really increased costs. But we're trying to budget for what we have been seeing, and what we have been seeing is a lot more than what we saw 10 years ago, for example, and 20 years ago. So the SBU program and all of our expenditures, not just associated with that, but with our collection system, which is, this is what's referring to, we have a lot of wet weather operational costs. And so those are continuing to grow, and that is all budgeted for. But there really truly are things that we don't anticipate to happen every year, but they could.
Right. The reason I'm asking you that, you're right. You are supposed to be the experts. The taxpayers are paying you all to be experts. So folks at home that you don't want to just wait for the rain and say, go to the Kroger or something's coming. So I just didn't understand, you added this, or unforeseen weather events. And you just said, we ain't seen nothing in 500 years, but you put this under your concerns. So I just didn't understand why there is not quote-unquote "a rainy day fund" for real rainy days. Because everything that you put in here is always the taxpayers, almost like they're the problem. But you put in here extra for your engineers. You got, you found $500,000 out of the sky. So I just would think that, and the budget that I'd like to see is putting something that makes sense based on your expertise in terms of, not you personally, but the, all the money that taxpayers are paid for these experts, equipments and all that stuff. And I wouldn't want to see unforeseen weather events, because like you said, these events have been more reoccurring. We understand the ones that's 500 years, that might be 200 years, but, you know, it doesn't take, people don't have to go to school to see that the weather has changed. And they want to get some assistance when these basements start flooding over. So I would have wanted that to be included or at least referenced in the budget that we were considering before we passed it. It's not a shocker that we've had these heavy rains and tornado warnings. We just had one yesterday. Might be another one coming. We've got to hurry up and get out of here because one might be coming now. But I just think that, I'm just concerned, of course, I'm just getting this, so I can't delve into it as much as I'd like to, but I want to know more about your unforeseen weather events. And what do you mean by that's a concern financially? And what do we have in reserve or quote-unquote rainy day fund to help with that? SUB, we've been talking about that. I think it's been a big priority for this board, that program and making sure that it's operable. And then the things that aren't covered by SUB, because on here you say your SUB fund is what, 30%, 36% already spent or, could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so this again is at the end of the...
I'm sorry, 34%.
Yeah. So that is, some of those dollars are not actually spent at that time, and again, this is at the end of the first quarter, but they are committed. So as part of the sewer backup program, we have contracts with vendors who provide the cleaning services and also provide, we have a program where we install prevention devices on houses. Some of those funds are encumbered to those contractors, those vendors, you know, prior to actually performing work. So I don't believe that, again, that we are overbudget in our SBU at the end of the first quarter. It's just that we have a little more than one quarter committed. The program itself, again, every year when we, since I've been here doing this, when we bring our budget, we talk about the SBU program, we do always try to impress upon everyone that it's really an unpredictable program. It is, it is a reactive program, and it's impossible to completely predict the costs of it. And so rather than overfund it, we have, you know, really gone with the average of where we've been. So, but that really is something that we try to highlight during the budget process to be clear, and that's really all we're doing here. I don't, you know, I don't have any reason to believe that we would need to come back and ask for more dollars for the SBU program, but we always just like to highlight it because it is unknown and it is, we do have reactive programs. So that's really the intent here. The year that was where we had the significant, and we've had a lot of significant storms, where we had the one really did meet the 500-year threshold was in 2016, and the cost of responding to that were over 20 million just for that one storm, that one event alone. Once you totaled all the claims, all of that wasn't realized all at once, but those are, you know, that's how this can really, you know, exceed anything we would budget for. And again, I don't think any of the best client scientists in the world can tell us when the next one of those is going to happen, but we should be prepared. And the good thing is we're prepared in terms of the staffing and the response. We have contracts on standby, we're able to ramp up very quickly, but we really just can't predict the overall cost of it, I think, in advance.
Thank you. I just highlighted it because you highlighted it as a concern in your report. And, you know, you say you got 1,159 SBU investigations. I don't know if all our money is spent in investigations, because everybody that calls my office always say they've been declined. I don't know if anybody even gets anything. I mean, I like to report on, did anybody get anything? Because everybody I, you know, run into, you say it's not us, you're half an inch from our line, you're two feet from our line. It's a whole bunch of declines, and I just want to make sure that all our money is not spent up in people looking into it, that more of the money is going to people getting something fixed. So, you know, that's something that I'd like to get more information on, because a lot of times, we spend up a lot of money on personnel, consultants, you know, a whole lot of money on what they call soft cost. I want to see what the money is on the hard cost and how many people got help. Because everybody that's running around that I see, they get into, there's nothing but a decline. So I just wanted to see how much money is spent on actually fixing something versus inspecting something. And since you brought it up as a potential issue of running out of money, and you got on here 1,159 investigations, but it's not on here as 1,159 people got something fixed, then I get a little nervous, because like I said, all I've been hearing is people being declined. So I would like to know the difference between your soft costs and your hard costs and the actual taxpayer getting something fixed versus something looked into. That would be helpful. So that's all that I have. I'm sure there's other things, but those are the things that kind of stuck out when I just looked through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Diana, for being here this afternoon. I want to just highlight something related to the operating budget that I think, you know, has been talked about by both of my colleagues, and that is the cost of living increase. But that coupled with the EREP impact, which is 560,000, to a budget that is approved by the county commissioners, it just points out from my vantage point, the disconnect between, you know, having a utility that is owned by the county, run by the city, and some of these personnel issues are being handled by the city. But there seems to be a disconnect between that and the folks that approve the budget, which is us. And so I agree that, you know, I don't know what can be done about that. You know, if there can be some consultation or something related to city policy that impacts a budget that this county commission has to approve, and any overages then that we also have to deal with once those decisions are made by council. So it's just this dysfunction that we've talked about ever since I've been here, and I just think that's a good example of the dysfunction that's in front of us. But that's a larger issue than the discussion today. I don't have a lot of other questions related to the operating budget. I do look forward, though, to talking about some other things as you come back on a more regular basis, particularly the capital budget and the status of the bridge projects, the status of some of the projects that are the consented projects and also the infrastructure, you know, the maintenance that you're doing on infrastructure and getting an update related to those capital expenses that we have budgeted for, that you have asked for, and that are ongoing. So I'd be very, very interested in that and how we're doing there. Two other things, I know, we had a couple presentations related to the impervious surface fee, and we're looking forward to getting more information from you related to that and how we can move forward perhaps with implementing something that equalizes a little bit who's paying into the system related to how much water they're putting into the system and the cost really that it is to treat the water that they're pushing into the system. But this overland flooding issue, I think, is related to that. And so I'm interested in trying to think through those two things at the same time, where we've, the overland flooding is oftentimes related to impervious surface. And so we've got folks that have built impervious surface, you know, wittingly or not. The fact of the matter is, much of the water that goes into the system is from these impervious surfaces. It's also what's causing some of the flooding in people's homes and why they get declined because it's overland flooding, it's not sewer backup. And so if we think of these things together then and think about the fairness of the system and how we bill people, I would hope that we could overlay that overland flooding piece on top of what we've already heard about impervious surface and start to think through, you know, if we were to implement something to increase the fee for those that are contributing more to that water going into the system, how do we balance that with some of these downstream effects? And also keep in mind the ratepayers that over the history of the utility have been paying more with less usage. So there's, it's so complicated, but I hope we can kind of think through all that, because this overlay and flooding thing keeps coming up, and we're all getting these calls. And it is hard to talk to someone who has water in their basement about, you know, and I understand if it's not sewer backup, it's not covered through the sewer backup program. The question is, can we do anything there? And if we can, where's the money coming from? But the contributor is the impervious surface. So I feel like these things are all, I feel like I just talked in a big circle because they're all connected. And so, yeah, so when you all come back with the impervious surface, hopefully we can overlay some of that. And then the other, the last thing, I have been getting calls, one constituent in particular, about the policy of MSD about building over pipes. And sometimes we do build, allow folks to build over pipes, other times we don't allow for it, and there is this process or sometimes a lack thereof, that if people disagree with the determination about not building over a pipe, we've got a specific situation, I don't know if the other offices have heard about this, but there was a building, the building got torn down, somebody purchased the property, assuming they could build a building, because the building had been there, and they were told, no, you cannot build a building because there's a pipe running underneath it. Very confusing for this particular constituent, and they want to know how to appeal that to the board. And so I am looking at a standardized process where they would know exactly then what their next step is, you know, how they go about appealing to the board, because we've dealt with appeals very recently from other folks, and I don't remember what the entities were, and I probably wouldn't say it even if I did, but there clearly, some people understand the process to appeal and other people don't. And so I'm looking for a more standardized, understandable for the constituents process where if they have a disagreement, then they can come to us and make their case, and then we would act accordingly. So looking for something there, and I know, Diana, you've been involved with this particular case, so hoping that we can hone in on that maybe a little bit too, and you can further detail what you're coming up with at a further, our future meeting, when you come in front of us.
One good thing to report on that particular issue that you're mentioning, we have a meeting scheduled this week with the individual and our folks, just to, you know.
Okay, great.
But I understand overall what you're looking for.
Yeah, just something more, so it's not so difficult for them to understand how to appeal, right? We get something more standard.
Yeah, and typically, we are, in a sense, support, we've looked into it enough and supported the build over based on everything we know about the property and the, you know, potential impact of the sewer. And that's, so it comes to the board almost, you know, it's like on our recommendation versus if we don't recommend it, they don't know what to do. So I understand that's kind of where the lack of a process is.
Or if there's something else, I mean, maybe there's something that I don't understand about the process, but yeah, something where they have some recourse or, you know, or not.
They should be able to come to the board. I just don't think they, yeah, there's not a clear...
That's right.
...to do that if we haven't recommended it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Just briefly, just for folks who might be watching at home, just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity on the SBU issue as well, in particular from the perspective of the board. So we do work with them, in the budgeting process, we do try to work with MSD every year on how much to actually budget for SBU, recognizing that it is a bit of a, called a technically educated guess, I would say, in terms of how much to actually include. I think MSD tries to budget an average, recognizing what they've seen over the years, but that there's sometimes no way to anticipate, I think it was Norwood that got hit by the storm, Diana, that you referred to back in 2016. I forget how much we actually paid out in SBU claims that year, but it went into the...
Over 20 million.
Over 20 million. So we don't typically budget for that, but we do try to budget an average. My point being is not so much about the budgeting process, but for folks watching at home who may be concerned about a specific dollar amount that's in the budget, the board has never said no to a request for additional SBU funds. So if someone's watching at home and thinks, well, I'm hearing that, you know, is there enough budgeted this year for SBU claims? What if I get hit with something at the end of the summer? We've never said no. This board has never said no to a request. So we try to budget what we think... So we try to budget what we think is reasonable, but if there is something that happens, like a large event and MSD comes back, we've always worked to make sure those funds are available. So just if there's folks at home that were watching and worried about that, I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Thank you. And I don't think it's the allocation, I think it's the criteria. I think we need to take a look at it. And as was mentioned earlier, if we can come up with another program where other people that don't qualify for SBU could qualify for something else. I don't have anything else. I appreciate you coming. I look forward to seeing you again and we'll see you then.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to note that I'm on vacation in two weeks, so I'm not going to.
Okay.
After June, I'll be here, every two weeks, I promise.
All right, thank you.
So, thank you.
Uh huh. So we have an executive session before us. I'd like to just say two things right before that. Just a reminder about the Juneteenth flag raising on this Thursday at 11 o'clock in front of the courthouse. Whoever wants to come from the community, you're welcome to come. We look forward to seeing you. And in addition, my colleagues, I did present to your offices, we have spent, we will be spending $1.4 million toward large events funding. And so I sent a proposal to your offices to look at small event funding. All that $1.4 million that we're going to approve is in the Cincinnati area and I thought it would be great if we could provide some funding outside of Cincinnati for small events. And so if you could take a look at that, let me know what you think of it, not me personally, but just send information to the different chiefs of staff. And if we have to delay it, fine. I'd like to bring a resolution on Thursday just to say the concept is a good one. If not, we'll wait until we get approval of that. Okay, did you have anything? Did you have anything?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22 G4, to discuss collective bargaining stadia. I'll just leave it at collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Simper, Verman.
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.